All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome back to our late-August meeting. I hope everybody's having a good summer under the circumstances, making the best of things. And my fellow council members will be videoconferencing in this evening, as they've been doing for the last few months. I'm at the dais with our city manager, Drew Powers, and our city attorney, Tracy Noonan. We're about eight feet apart, so we've elected to not go with the masks, but we are certainly conscious of the situation. So with that, let me have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And your hands over your hearts, and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, if we may have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Proton Bill De La Penya?
Present.
Mayor Adam.
And I'm here, thank you. All right, well, we, as customary, we're going to go to our city manager to give us a COVID-19 update. How are we doing on that watch list, Drew?
Hi, Mayor Adam, thank you. Just a quick update for everyone since we last met in early July, and I trust that our residents have stayed relatively informed as we've gone through a surge of cases in July and into August. As we stand today, things for the last couple of weeks have been trending better for the county. As of today, 48 new cases are being reported, so that's obviously a better number than has been reported recently. The watch list that Mayor Adam referred to has six different criteria, and we are in the green, clear on five of those criteria, and we are very close to hopefully getting off the watch list for the final criteria, which is cases per 100,000 population. So we're closely tracking that. We need to keep the caseload by day under 60 cases in order to help us get there. Certainly today's numbers will help with that. Unfortunately, they did report two additional deaths today, 169-year-old female and an 86-year-old male, both with coma or irritities. For some scale and context, we've had 55 deaths in the county since we last met, so we have a total of 105 deaths now in the county since this began. Hard to believe we're in the sixth month of this now. It's certainly presented us with challenges we had never fathomed organizationally and community-wise, and for our businesses, and our residents, and our schools, and our parents. But at every turn, I see folks with a spirit of creativity, with trying to bring positivity to bear, and in every case, and you'll hear later tonight, the city is trying our very best to do things to lend support and assistance where we can, and recognize the huge challenges facing all of those in Thousand Oaks and beyond. So that's my brief update for this evening. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Drew. And the city naturally extends our sincere condolences to the families who have lost loved ones to COVID-19. It's a very unfortunate situation that we find ourselves in. However, as Drew said, everybody's working hard to stay safe, and the numbers seem to be trending downward. If I could ask you a question, Drew, on the watch list business, we're five out of six criteria, we're in the green now. If we do come off the watch list, what are the ramifications for the city?
So I wish there was 100% clarity on that. There was actually some reporting today on that for those counties that have come off the watch list. For instance, Orange County came off the watch list yesterday.
I saw that.
They're, the understanding is that they're going to need to remain off the watch list for some period of time before the state's going to greenlight the reopening of various business sectors that were closed as a result of this. And that includes our nail salons, our gems, indoor dining, and so on. So it appears that there's going to have to be, these counties are going to have to remain off the list for a period of time to demonstrate some stability, and then we'll be allowed to reopen those various sectors. We're anticipating additional guidance from the state on those things this week, perhaps any day this week, and that should give us more clarity.
So it doesn't mean automatic reopenings, but it's a first step in that direction?
Correct.
I see. All right, very good, thank you. All right, and we're going to go on to public comments. Have you to announce that, please, Ms. Rodriguez?
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Two individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you very much, and yes, we do have two speakers, both on video. First up would be Justin Link.
Good evening, Mayor Adam, members of council.
Hi.
My name is Justin Link, city traffic engineer for the City of Simi Valley and director-at-large for the Ventura County chapter of the American Public Works Association. APWA is a nationwide organization comprised of over 29,000 professionals of various disciplines with the common goal of maintaining and improving infrastructure in communities across North America. Our chapter has 300 members alone and is one of the most active of all 63 chapters. I am here on behalf of the Ventura County chapter tonight to present symbolically the City of Thousand Oaks senior engineer Dan Lazo and project engineer Gareth Madrid with the 2019 Structures Project of the Year Award for the Hague Road Drainage Channel. This award recognizes the efforts of the Thousand Oaks Public Works Department, an APWA accredited agency, to continuously improve quality of life for its constituents. By eliminating the open drainage channel and replacing it with an enclosed box covert, the channel is less susceptible to debris and standing water, thereby reducing the risk of flooding, odors, and pests such as mosquitoes to neighboring properties. This project could not have been successful without the obvious leadership of the city council and city manager, or the expert engineering and construction management of the city's public works department. As a resident of Thousand Oaks, it is my honor to congratulate the city on receiving this award and keep up the good work.
All right, thank you for bringing that to us, Justin, and congratulations to the awardees. Next up, Adam Haverstock, Greater Canaah Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Adam Haverstock, Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Canaah Valley Chamber of Commerce, with a couple updates for you. The first one I wanted to mention is that the chamber has been putting together boxes of PPE, that's personal protective equipment, with disinfectant wipes and hand sanitizer, and delivering it to small businesses in the community. The PPE in the boxes was purchased by members of the Chamber's Chairman's Club, and the chamber staff distributed the boxes. Businesses who have received boxes in Thousand Oaks include Barone's Pizza, Channel Island Scuba, Elegant Nails, Mathnasium, Oak and Iron, Petals and Pints, Lazy Dog, Urban Plates, and many more. We are currently working on assembling our next 150 boxes of PPE for distribution in September. We wanted to say thank you again to the city council for supporting the Small Business Relief Fund. So far to date, the fund has distributed $68,000 to 35 small businesses within the City of Thousand Oaks. The next round of applications are open now, and they are due by October 23rd, and the application is on our website at canahochamber.org. The chamber has been promoting local economic development through our Shop Canaah program, and as part of that program, we've been shooting videos at many local businesses to show how they've adjusted their operations to meet the requirements of the local health orders. Videos have been shot at Suddenland Vintage Winery, XO Bloom, Channel Island Scuba, and the Assistance League Thrift Shop. Videos can be viewed at the chamber's Facebook page at facebook.com/canaahchamber. The Chamber of Commerce is going to be hosting a candidates forum for the Thousand Oaks City Council, and then another one for the Canaah Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees. The event is being co-hosted by the Acorn Newspaper, and the moderators will be the Acorn Thousand Oaks editor, Kyle Jory, and managing editor, John Losing. The event will be virtual, and it will be broadcast from the chamber website and on social media, and it's free and open to the public to view. CVUSD candidates will be on Wednesday, October 7th, and Thousand Oaks City Council candidates will be on Thursday, October 8th, and the public can submit questions via the chamber website. And then finally, I wanted to say that the Tourism District, Visit Canaah Valley, welcomed two new members this month. The Courtyard by Marriott in Agora Hills and the Town Place Suites by Marriott in Agora Hills both opened their doors this month, and that increases our membership of our Tourism District to 16 hotels, with five in Agora Hills and 11 in Thousand Oaks. Thank you, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Adam, good report, appreciate that. All right, now we'll go on to the consent calendar. Anything to pull, my fellow councilmembers? If hearing nothing, may I get a motion, please?
I'd like to move the consent calendar to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler, we have a motion on the floor, take a vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Bill De La Penya?
Aye.
Mayor Adam.
And that's a yes for me.
And that motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. I'm going to reorder things just a little bit here, and I'd like to go with the council's okay on that. To the attitudes survey first, we need to accommodate Dr. McLarney's schedule, so if that's okay with everybody, I'd like to do that. And Melissa Hurtado is going to be presenting, and I believe Dr. McLarney is here as well, yes?
I am.
Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor Adam, yes, I am going to introduce Dr. Timothy McLarney, he's the president of True North Research, and he will be providing the presentation tonight.
Great, thank you, Melissa. And good evening, Mayor, members of council. Dr. McLarney, president of True North Research. We are a firm that, over the last 20 years, has specialized in working with California cities and using surveys to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and customers that they serve. To date, my business partner and I have worked on over 1,000 research studies for public agencies, and about 400 of those studies are what we call community satisfaction surveys, similar to the type of study that we'll be talking about tonight here for Thousand Oaks. I mentioned that level of experience mainly because as I go through tonight's presentation, I might make reference to how the results were seeing in Thousand Oaks compared to what we might typically see when we do this type of work for other communities and other cities, and I wanted you to have a sense for the experience base from which I'll be speaking. I think it's also worth noting, and I've had the privilege of being the City of Thousand Oaks research partner for about a decade, and you'll see that in some of the slides that we'll share. We're not only sharing the results of the 2020 survey, we have the ability to also go back, in some cases, back to 2009. And so with that, I welcome questions from council as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference. Okay, so if you can turn the slide, Melissa? Great. So before we talk about the results of the study, probably helpful to take a moment to review the purpose of the study, or why cities do this type of work, as well as the methodology, or how we went about conducting the study. In terms of the purpose of these studies, I see them really as falling into two camps. One is community needs assessments, meaning using the survey to get an understanding of what are the needs and priorities and preferences of your residents with respect to the services and facilities that are provided by the City of Thousand Oaks, right? The flip side of that coin is really the satisfaction piece, or the performance measurement piece. How well is the city performing in meeting residents' needs, right? Where are you exceeding their expectations? Where are you meeting their expectations? And where might there be some opportunities for improvement? In addition to those two sort of main overarching objectives, these surveys also represent an opportunity to periodically check in with your residents on issues that are salient, particularly salient at that time or important. In this case, we have a series of questions related to land use and housing, as well as homelessness. That will help the city both in terms of your general plan update, but also in sort of setting policies for the future. The survey is an opportunity to gauge how well the city's performing in communicating with residents over time, and then importantly, because we have the ability to track many of these questions, not just for the 2020 survey, but also back in time, it's an opportunity for us to see sort of how things have trended over time. Oh, next slide, please. So in terms of the methodology, of how we went about this study, we use what's called a mixed methodology approach. It used to be back in the day that in order to do a statistically reliable community survey, you only needed one thing, you needed a telephone, right? You needed to be able to recruit people by reaching out to them by telephone, because everybody had a landline, nobody had caller ID, and you could get a representative sample of households by just using the telephone for recruiting and data collection. Times have obviously changed a lot in terms of the rise of cellphone use, the rise of call screening, right? There are some individuals that even if you have their correct phone number, they're not going to answer the phone, and so we have experimented with a number of different methodologies, and we've settled in on what we call the mixed method approach, where we're using multiple recruiting methods. We are recruiting by mail letters, email, as well as telephone, right, for households that are randomly sampled as part of our study. And we're also allowing residents the opportunity to participate either by telephone or online at a password-protected website. And by using multiple recruiting methods and multiple data collection methods, it allows us to get a more representative sample of your residents, it reduces response. It reduces response bias, it increases the response rate, and ultimately, it improves the overall reliability of the study. We wound up speaking this year to a random sample of 690, so almost 700 Thousand Oaks residents. These are all adults. That's a bit more than we have traditionally surveyed in the community in the past, in part because we wanted to have higher degree of fiscal reliability for this survey, because it's going to be feeding to some extent into the general plan. Now, because this was a random sample of adult residents in the community, and not a census of every adult, it has what's known as a margin of error due to sampling. In this case, that's plus or minus 3.7%. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results we'll be talking about tonight are within 3.7% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your adult residents. Next slide, please. Okay, on to the results. So we opened up the survey with some high-level questions. The first of which is, how would you rate the overall quality of life in Thousand Oaks? Would you say it is excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor? Shown here on the screen is the answers on the far left in 2020, as well as the answers in prior years. What you see here in 2020 is you had 94% of your residents rate the quality of life in the community as excellent or good. You had about 5% who said fair, and a very small percentage, less than 1%, who said poor, very poor, or they were not sure. In looking at these results over time, one of the things that is so striking to me is, you know, considering everything that has happened in the city since 2017, right? So currently, we're living in a pandemic. You've had the impacts of that on the daily life of residents. You've had the impacts of that on the city's normal operations. We have an economic downturn, we have the shuttering of nonessential businesses. So we have that malaise happening currently, and for the last six months, as Drew mentioned at the outset of the interview. But if you go back in time a little bit more, you also had a mass shooting, you had a large-scale wildfires that impacted the community in a devastating way. And so it has been a difficult few years, right, for the city to be able to operate in, and yet, and for residents experiencing all this. And yet, when you compare the 2020 results to the 2017 results, you see almost identical answers, right? That was unexpected to me. I, with that background I just mentioned, I was expecting that we'd see some dips in the survey results this cycle, and you see here on this slide, as well as a few others, that those dips really did occur. And what that is impressive is that how sort of resilient residents' opinions are about their community and the quality of life there, and how hard I think the city has worked sort of swimming upstream against some of these large forces that naturally would want to sort of press down people's, their performance and residents' views of the city. And so it's impressive to see that the stability in those results over time. Next slide, please. So after we asked individuals to tell us to rate the overall quality of life in the community, we went on to ask them, if the city government could change one thing to make Thousand Oaks a better place to live now and in the future, what change would you like to see? This question is what we call an open-ended question, meaning we just ask the question, and we let respondents tell us in their own words what changes they'd like the city to make to improve the quality of life in the community. We then went back and looked at those verbatim responses, and we grouped them into the categories you see here on the slide. And at the top of the list, what you see is limiting growth and development and open space. You had about 15% who mentioned that. The next two kind of go together. You had 15% who said, "Not sure, can't think of anything", and you had another 12% who said, "No changes are needed, everything is fine". Those two answers, in many ways, are kind of the ideal answer to this question, because if you think about the question, you're sort of handing somebody a soapbox and saying, "If we as the city government could do one thing better to improve quality of life in the community, what change would you like to see?" And what we find is you have about a quarter of your residents who say, "I don't know, I'm stuck for an answer, nothing comes to mind", or that say specifically, "No changes are needed, right, we're doing a great job", so that's wonderful. In addition to the limiting growth and preserving open space at the top, you also saw references to addressing homeless issue, about 11%. You'll see later in this presentation, we have a number of questions and slides on that topic, as well as that increasing recreational facilities and programs, improving public safety, reducing traffic congestion. So those are sort of the top answers when you ask folks in an open-ended manner what changes the city government can make to improve the quality of life in Thousand Oaks. Next slide, please. So this next slide shows the responses to what in some ways is probably the most important question in the survey from a performance management perspective, and it's the results to the question, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the City of Thousand Oaks is doing to provide city services, right? Because we're not asking about a specific service area, and we ask them to comment on the city's performance overall, it can be considered an overall performance rating for the city. Here again, with everything that's happened in the past two, three years, and with the city having to function in, you know, in sort of a difficult scenario with the pandemic, I was expecting that we'd see some declines in the results. And what we find is, in fact, that the 2020 results are nearly identical to 2017 results, right? You have about nine in 10 residents who indicate that they're satisfied with the city's overall performance in providing municipal services, which is about the same that we saw in 2017. I can also say that, not shown here, but in the full report, we break this down by all sorts of demographics in the community, and the high level of satisfaction you see here is played out across all sorts of subgroups. So by age, gender, how long they've lived in the city, do they have a child in the home, those types of questions. We saw consistent levels of high satisfaction. Next slide, please. So that last slide talked about the city's overall performance in providing municipal services. In the next two slides, what we did is we sort of dove deeper and broke that down into a whole list of specific service areas, and it was sort of a two-part question. First question, what you see here on this slide, was simply asking individuals to tell us, how important are these various services to you? Are they extremely important, or very important, which are represented by the dark blue and medium blue bars? Are they somewhat important, or not at all important? That's represented by the negative space off to the right. We asked these in a randomized order for every respondent, but we have sorted them from high to low here based on that combined percentage of folks who said it's either extremely or very important to them. What you find here in Thousand Oaks is what we typically find in most cities, that when you ask about the importance of all the things that cities do, public safety and public works tend to rise to the top of the list, right? So at the top of the list, we had providing fire protection, emergency medical services, followed by maintaining city streets and roads, providing police services, and on down. As you get towards the bottom of the list, you tend to get into some service areas that isn't that they aren't valued, but that when you stack them up against things like public safety and public works, they tend to be viewed as somewhat less of a priority. So things like providing culture and performing arts and live entertainment, or protecting oaks and landmark trees, and providing recreation programs for all ages. Again, not that they're not important, but it just gives you a sense of the relative importance that residents assign to various services. Next slide, please. Same exact list of services, only now we've asked the second part of this question, which is, how satisfied are you with the city's efforts to provide these services? Would you say you are very satisfied, or somewhat satisfied, which is the dark green bar and light green bars? Are you, you know, dissatisfied, somewhat, or very, or you not know? And what you see here is, again, these were asked in a randomized order, but we've sorted them from high to low based on that combined percentage of folks who said they were satisfied. What's striking about this slide is that even at the low end of the scale, right? Even for the services that tested at the bottom, you have 70% support, I mean, 70% of residents say that they are satisfied with the city's efforts to do this. So managing traffic congestion in the city, for example, managing growth and development, and promoting economic development for a healthy business community. At the top of the list, though, you see a number of services that are above the 90% satisfaction range. That's providing library services, providing fire protection, emergency medical services, and maintaining park areas. One thing I will point out is that that item at the very bottom of the list, managing traffic congestion in the city, although it's still at the bottom of the list, we saw a 9% improvement in satisfaction with the city's efforts in this area between 2017 and 2020, right? So satisfaction has increased for that item, still at the bottom of the list, but you're making strides. So next slide, please. One of the, there are a series of questions that were new to the 2020 survey, in part because the city's going through a general plan update, and we thought we might as well use a portion of the survey to help inform some of the decisions that we made with that update. And so one of those questions you see the results to here was simply asked individuals, after informing them that the city is going through a general plan update that's going to affect the quality of life in the city on issues like land use, housing, and the types of business and amenities that are available locally, we asked them to tell us, for each of the land uses and amenities shown in that slide, do they feel there's currently too little of this in Thousand Oaks? Is it about the right amount, or is it too much? And you can see that for many of the items we tested, the dominant answer is, it's about right, right? So if you look at, for example, restaurants, which is four up from the bottom, you know, we had about 2/3 of folks say that the amount of restaurants in the community is about right. You had about 6% who said there's not enough, and you had about 24%, I mean, sorry, 6% who said there's too many, and about 24% who said there's not enough restaurants. What's interesting in Thousand Oaks, which you don't often see, is if you get to the very top of the list, the top four items there that had the highest percentage of residents say that there's not enough of this in the city, all pertain to affordable housing, right? So affordable housing for middle-income families, affordable housing for low-income families, affordable housing for very low-income families, as well as affordable housing for seniors. So clearly, there's an appetite in the community for more affordable housing. We also saw that there is perceived deficiencies in good-paying jobs and employment opportunities, as well as smaller boutique retail stores, by about 35% or so of your residents. So this gives you an idea of kind of when you look across the city and you're thinking about land use for the future, where, what are types of developments that residents see a need for? And what are some that maybe they feel like, we've already got plenty and we don't need more? Next slide, please. So, yeah, as we saw on that prior slide, there was a perceived need for additional affordable housing. Recognizing also, as you're going through a general plan, that there will be, California state law requires that all cities plan for additional housing, and as part of their regional housing needs allocation, it's expected that the state is going to require the City of Thousand Oaks to plan for several thousand new units of housing, right? Like many cities in the state, you're going to be told you have to be able to plan for these, for this additional housing. So with that in mind, we took an opportunity in the survey to get a sense for how residents would like the city to accommodate that new housing. So after explaining what I just did now about the need to accommodate new housing according to state law, we asked residents a couple of different questions. The first, simply asked them, would they prefer that these new homes be concentrated in fewer larger developments and located in areas of the city that are close to transit stores and restaurants? In other words, you know, as we accommodate these new units, we'd rather concentrate them in these areas? Or should they be spread out throughout the city by having smaller infill projects and allowing for more housing units per parcel within existing residential areas? So do we concentrate these new units, or do we spread them out throughout the city? And what you see here on the slide is that you have a mix of opinions on that, but that in general, there is a bit of a lean in favor of concentrating these new developments, or these new units in larger developments, as opposed to spreading them out throughout the city. You had about 51% who preferred to concentrate them, about 41% who preferred to spread them out through the city. Next slide. Continuing with the questioning on additional housing, we also asked, you know, what types of housing do you think these additional units should be? Should they be mostly townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes? Should they be mostly condominiums and apartments? Or should they be an even mix of townhomes, condos, and apartments? And what you see here is a pretty clear preference for an even mix. You had 58, 59% of respondents saying they prefer the even mix. Just 6% said, "I'd prefer mostly condos and apartments", you had about a quarter who said, "I'd prefer mostly townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes". Next slide, please. So prior to the arrival of COVID, which seems like an eternity ago for many people, but I can remember that period of time, and I did this type of surveys in a lot of communities around California, and what you'd seen is that the issue of homelessness was often at the top of the list of what residents felt was the most pressing problem, or most pressing issue in their community, right? Back in 2016, homelessness was barely a blip. When you do these types of surveys, in terms of what's the most important issue facing the community, by 2019, it had become the number-one issue in a lot of communities. And so not having any data on that in Thousand Oaks, we thought we would take the opportunity in the survey to ask people a series of questions about homelessness. The first of those questions simply asked them, over the past three years, would you say the amount of homeless people you have observed in the City of Thousand Oaks has decreased, stayed about the same, or increased, right? And you can see here that the most common response to this, 59% of individuals, said that they think the amount of homeless people they see in the city has increased over the past three years. You had about 29% who felt it stayed about the same, and just 4% who felt that the amount of homeless in Thousand Oaks had declined during this period. Next slide, please. We went on then to ask, to present them with a series of statements about homeless people, and with the idea we wanted to profile what residents' attitudes were about homeless individuals. And so for each of those statements you see on the slide, simply asked us to tell, asked them to tell us whether they agree or disagree with the statement. And the statements themselves are purposely pointed, right? Meaning, we were trying to make strong statements, either positive or negative, about homeless individuals, because we wanted to get a sense of where residents lie on this spectrum of, you know, generally negative views of homeless people, neutral or mixed views, and positive views of homeless people. Because we know that that often is the foundation of explaining the types of policies that residents are willing to support, right? If you have a negative opinion of homeless people, you tend to lean towards certain types of policies and not others. If you have a positive opinion, you lean towards different ones. And so we wanted to first profile the attitudes in the community. And what you see here is, in the aggregate, a little bit of a mix of opinions, right? We had a lot of agreements, 60, about 65% or so who said, "Most homeless people are good people, but they've fallen on hard times", right? Right behind that, though, you have a similar level of agreement, slightly less, to homeless people represent a threat to public health, right? Third one on the list, with a little bit of help, "Many homeless people can get back on their feet", right? You had just under 60% agree with that. And at the bottom, you had about 40% who said homeless people are more dangerous than the average person. So in the aggregate, it seems like it's a little bit of a split mindset here, right? We're getting high levels of agreement for some negative statements, and we're getting some high levels of agreement for some positive statements. The purpose of this, though, if you go to the next slide, was to give us a sense of where do Thousand Oaks residents lie on this sort of dimension from generally negative views of homeless people to generally positive views. And what you find is, when you look at how the answers cluster at the individual level, you had about 44% of your residents who were generally positive in their views of homeless people, right? We had about a quarter who were neutral, and then you had about 30% who were generally negative in their views of homeless people. And again, the reason why this matters is because when we go to the next slide, where we're asking about various strategies that the city could take to address homelessness, understanding kind of where respondents are on that spectrum helps us understand which policies tend to only find agreement in one group, and which policies find broad agreement regardless of how people view homeless individuals. And so what we did is, we presented them with a series of strategies you see there on the left side of that slide, and we simply asked them whether they would support or oppose the city taking this action in addressing homelessness. And you can see that some strategies are more widely supported than others, so providing funding for mental health services was at the top of the list, that found the strongest support, along with providing funding for counseling and rehab for drug and alcohol addiction, as well as then joining with other cities and the county to create more regional homeless shelters. What is striking about these three strategies is it's not just that they found high levels of support overall, that even within, when you look at it by the different groups, generally positive, neutral, or negative opinions of homeless people, we had at least 2/3 of individuals in every one of those groups support these strategies as well. So they are consensus strategies. These are things that regardless of how you feel about homeless people, you can support that type of strategy. As you move down the list, you start to get into strategies that start to be a little more divisive depending on how you view homeless individuals. So enhancing lighting in public areas to discourage people from using these areas to sleep. If you have a negative view of homeless people, you tend to have a stronger level of support for that policy. If you have a positive view of homeless people, you tend to have a lower level of support for that policy, and on down. Next slide, please. Now, the City of Thousand Oaks has a limited budget, and probably a seemingly unlimited list of things that it could spend that money on, right? And demands on that budget. And so City of Thousand Oaks, like all cities, has to prioritize and decide what are And so city of Thousand Oaks, like all cities, has to prioritize and decide what are we going to fund? And what do we just not, can't fund because we don't have the budget? Um, so to help the city in that exercise of prioritizing, uh, we also asked individuals in the survey to tell us what priorities they would place on each of the items you see there on that slide, which are potentials uses of city funds in the future. And so for each one, we simply said, should this be a high priority, a medium priority or a low priority for future city funding? Or should the cities not spend any money on this item? Here again, these were presented in a random order, but we sorted them from high to low based on a combined percentage of folks who said it's a high priority and medium priority. At the top of the list, you see maintaining fire, uh, protection services, right? At the highest priority, I mean, you had over 95% say it's a high, it's a higher median priority. Followed by maintaining parks and recreation facilities, investing in road maintenance and maintaining police services. So like we saw earlier where issues of public safety and public works tend to rise at the top of the list, we're seeing that kind of scenario here as well. Um, I want to emphasize that if just because something's towards the bottom of the list. Um, in this case, expanding and improving the local trail system, doesn't mean residents don't want that, right? They do, um, it's just that when, in the nature of this question, we're kind of forcing their hand. We're keep telling them that not everything can be a high priority. You're going to have to make choices here. And so when push comes to shove, the public safety and public work items tend to sort of rise more to the top of the list. Next slide please. Um, in addition to asking a, a lot of questions about city services and policies. We also got into questions about local governance and as well as customer service. And so we asked individuals on this slide to tell us, you know, for each of these items, tell me how good a job you think the city of Thousand Oaks is doing? Would you say the city does an excellent, good, fair, poor, very poor job in this area? And across the board, we had majority say that the city is doing an excellent or good job in each one of these. At the top of the list though, providing access to information. Followed by working through critical issues facing the city, engaging with residents to get their feedback. And then being responsive to residents and businesses, these were your top four. These, by the way, we looked at how these compared to 2017. And what we found is that they're very stable. We had, we didn't find any statistically significant differences between where we were in 2017 and, and where we are today. Despite again, everything that's gone on and the challenges the city has faced during this period. Next slide please. So about 30% of your residents had indicated that in the past year, they had personally interacted with city staff. This is down a little bit from 2017, but that's to be expected since a fair amount of the last year has been spent in this very weird, uh, and unfortunate COVID and pandemic situation, which has sort of altered the way the city is, can, you know, interact with residents. Um, so about 30% had reported that personal interaction. When we went on to ask those individuals to rate city staff in terms of their helpfulness, professionalism and accessibility. What we found is it got really high marks across the board, better than 90% indicating that staff is very or somewhat professional, helpful and accessible. Uh, all these numbers ticked up a little bit from 2017. So again, despite the fact that, you know, there's so much that's been going on in the background, that's been a challenge in the city. Uh, and that the city's having to operate in this pandemic scenario. Uh, we're finding that residents' views of staff in terms of their helpfulness, professionalism, accessibility have actually gone up a bit. Next slide. Um, so one of the areas that has been a real challenge for many cities and other public agencies frankly, over the last eight, 10 years, has been city resident communication. It used to be back in the day that, you know, we all kind of turned to the same newspapers and the same TV shows and radio shows. Uh, and so, um, it was comparatively easy for a public agency to get their message out to residents. Cause you knew there were three or four channels that you had to be in and, and pretty much covered everybody. Obviously that has changed dramatically over the last eight years with the rise of the internet and social media. Everybody seems to get their news through different avenues these days and it just becomes harder to reach individuals in that environment. I think it's also the case that, you know, as we've come to learn that the moment we want to know anything, we just reach in our pocket, grab out our cell phone and get the answer, that the timeliness, uh, expectations have gone up as well, right? The expectations of how people, um, are communicated with from public agencies kind of gone up. And so against this sort of shifting ground over time, what has happened in general is that city resident, uh, or, or satisfaction with city resident communications has kind of trickled downstream a bit. And what's encouraging about 2020, as you see these numbers here, is that the city of Thousand Oaks in the last three years has sort of reversed this trend, right? And you see that between 2009 and 2017, there was just sort of step down effect that was happening. Again, I saw that same sort of staircase effect happening just about every city that I worked with, uh, during the same period. But in 2020, instead of continuing that sort of step down, uh, the cities actually gained some ground back in terms of resident satisfaction with the cities that have communicated with residents. Next slide please. Um, in terms of, uh, where individuals reported that they're getting their news about, uh, Thousand Oaks news services, programs and events. Uh, you see here, uh, we gave them up to three, uh, responses to this question. Top of the scale there, the Acorn, you had about 65% who mentioned that they turned to the Acorn for, uh, Thousand Oaks news events programs. Uh, followed by Nextdoor at 26%, social media like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, 25%. And then the Ventura County Star at about 22% and on down. Um, like I mentioned the last slide, how we've seen a lot of changes in that over time. We have also seen a lot of changes in the information sources that people turn to for local news and events, right? And so those two things go hand in hand. Uh, next slide please. So we are through the graphic portion of the presentation. I just have a couple of wrap up slides, uh, that I want to share with you. And then I welcome questions from council, uh, if there are any. So, you know, I, I think the, the obvious takeaway to me, right? And again, I have the, the benefit and the perspective of doing this for, uh, a lot of cities, more than 400 of these studies over the years. Is that, you know, despite again, what has been a very challenging last couple of years with wildfires, the mass shooting and the pandemic, the city of Thousand Oaks has been, been able to maintain a high level of service to residents and that residents' views of the city and their community remain high. We saw that in the opinion of the overall quality of life in the city, 94% rating as excellent or good. We saw a high level of satisfaction with the city's overall performance and providing municipal services on par with what we saw in 2017. Uh, we saw that when you looked at it at the individual service level, a lot of stability in those and that the city has also gotten some traction in certain service areas and improved satisfaction, namely with respect to managing traffic congestion in the city. And so, you know, when you take all that in and again, you consider it against the, the backdrop of everything that's happened the past two years. This is an excellent report card, right? I mean, this is what you're hoping to find. Um, and again, I was a bit surprised because I was expecting things perhaps to tick down a touch with all those challenges. And so, you know, I think, uh, this is really a, a, a great report card on the city leadership, right? It takes good leadership to, to make that happen. It also is a great report card on the city staff's performance and executing, uh, on a day-to-day basis for residents. And I also want to point out that, you know, when you get results like this, this is, these don't happen by accident, right? These are not given, these are earned. And I can promise you that if you as a city were not performing well, residents are very quick to let you know that in the space of this survey, right? And so the fact that your numbers have remained high over time is, is impressive and you know, it, it should be, you know, you should be proud of that. Um, now like any customer satisfaction survey, so to speak. You should not just be looking at, say, how are we doing today, but also looking to the future, where are there opportunities for, where we can improve, right? And when you look at, at the survey results in their, in their totality, I think there are some, some areas that, you know, are clearly important to residents and they'd like to see some level of improvement. Uh, managing growth and development and protecting open space is a top priority for them. Managing traffic congestion in the city, promoting economic development, maintaining streets and roads. Addressing homelessness and then maintaining funding for fire protection and police services. Those are kind of the bullets where we've, that were priorities for residents and, and I think should be perhaps opportunity areas to the extent that the city has discretionary resources looking to the future. Um, next slide please. And then finally, you know, the survey here did provide some clear feedback on some policy questions that the city is going to be facing in your general plan and, and elsewhere. Um, I think that there's, there's broad recognition that there's a lack of affordable housing, uh, in the community, right? Um, particularly, you know, not just for very low income, but even middle income and seniors. Um, there's sort of just a, you know, a, a perception that there's, there's not enough of that for many, for many respondents. Um, in terms of how you accommodate new housing, whether that's affordable or not, uh, based on the regional housing needs allocation. Um, there's a preference for, sort of, there's a leaning preference towards concentrating those new units as opposed to spreading them uh, throughout the city. Uh, that doesn't mean you necessarily have to do one strategy or the other, but it gives you a sense of where your community leans. Um, and we also found that most respondents favored a mix of housing types. They don't want just to see all apartments or all condos, for example, or all townhomes. They think there should be a balanced mix of those, those options. And then finally on homelessness, like, you know, most communities we survey, there's been a perceived increase of homelessness in the city from your resident's perspective. Um, but we did find that there was a lot of consensus on a few of the strategies the city considered, uh, or could consider for, for addressing homelessness in the future. Uh, providing funding for mental health services, counseling for alcohol and drug addiction, as well as joining with other cities in the county to create more regional housing shelters, right? Those are strategies that kind of appeal to residents across the board regardless of how they view homeless people in general. So with that, I will end my monologue and I will welcome any questions from council.
Thank you, Dr. McCarney. Excellent report. Uh, so, uh, what would be our letter grade, Dr. McCarney?
I think all these considered is a solid A.
A solid A, very good. That is good to hear. Uh, I'm especially impressed, uh, as far as our 381 employees of the city and how well they have been performing. Nine out of 10 rated helpful, professional, accessible. I mean, they're the face of our city and that is a, a wonderful thing to know that uh, there's such a huge, uh, responsiveness with our city employees, such a great morale. Especially as you said, in the context of all the challenges that we're facing. Uh, very, very, very happy to hear that. Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we, uh?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, oh, go ahead Drew, certainly.
Just, uh, to put a, a, a quick point on, um, Doc, Dr. McCarney's comments and um, Melissa Hurtado, uh, was overseeing this project. Um, it's a tribute to the city council that, uh, you've had the continued foresight to keep this pattern going. Uh, being able to measure this data, uh, over periods of time is extremely valuable. And to be, be able to see where trends lie and how, uh, how things, uh, begin to, to shape and, uh, change within a community. And, uh, Dr. McCarney mentioned one particular example, uh, just as a, as an aside. The, um, question around managing traffic congestion in our city. Um, the council clearly saw that note in past years and has made significant investments in flashing yellow signals throughout the community in, uh, over $18 million in street and road investment over that period of time. And, and the numbers bear out those investments that the public is recognizing it. A nine percentage point jump is, uh, is significant. And so just one example of how our department heads and our leadership team, um, and managers within the organization utilize this data to help make decisions. It also helps to formulate budget-based decisions as, uh, as you're moving into the budget process, uh, next year. So just wanted to remind you of those things as you move into questions.
Thank you, Drew. Yeah, we as a city, we need to listen and we need to respond. And, uh, I think as council members, I know we all get emails from our constituents and we all follow up uh, with those emails to make sure that they're answered and people are satisfied. And I think the results show in the survey and I'm also happy that the survey is being done now because it's certainly going to help with our general plan update as we work through that in the following year. So that will be, uh, help as well. So why don't we, uh, go to some council questions? Who wants to start?
I'll, I'll jump in there, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, Councilmember Engler.
Well, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, comment that, uh, overall, just looking at this, the, um, I think one of the key things that I found in this is one, one takeaway is that we are doing a pretty good job. Let's not, as the report says, oversteer. Uh, let's make my course corrections, but let's not completely turn our, our car around here. Um, the, the secondly, secondly, I think there's, was a, I'm, I'm a believer in, uh, a well-executed survey. And it's, it's my understanding and my feeling, Kevin, talking to citizens that, um, the survey results are somewhat, uh, my experience in talking to people. Keeping our strong public safety, protecting our open space, um, doing something about our housing issues. Uh, those are all on the top of our, our residents' mind. And the information, uh, that we can garner from this study will assist us going forward. When we met earlier, I, I spoke with, uh, uh, True North's representatives earlier. Can you go a little bit more into the methodology and why you think this is a very good representation of, of our, uh, citizenry?
Sure, sure. I mean, one of the things you hear the common criticism that, you know, that people don't trust surveys sometimes, right? Because, and the problem with that is oftentimes surveys aren't conducted in a statistically reliable manner, right? One of the most important things in, in a survey where that allows you to survey six, 700 individuals and be able to know with a certain degree of reliability, what the entire population would have said. Is that it'd be based on a randomized sample where every unit of the population has an equal probability of being chosen for the study. When you just use online or you just use telephone, for example, you're not actually adhering to that, um, sort of requirement of inferential statistics because you know that some people aren't going to answer their phone and you know that some people maybe don't have online access. This is why when we develop our randomized sample of household, we use multiple recruiting methods, right? Once we've selected that household, we use mail, we use email and we use phone. And so you're making sure that you're giving somebody who's been randomly selected in your sample, uh, multiple ways that they can be recruited for the study. And then we also give individuals multiple ways to participate. They can participate, uh, by telephone or they can participate in a password protected website. What we don't do is just open up the survey and say, hey, whoever wants to take it, take it for the statistically reliable phase one study. Because it's important that that sample in fact be representative of your larger community of residents. And to do that, we have to do it in a randomized manner. We also though, after selecting folks at random, we will monitor data collection and the sample profile as we go. Making sure that demographically our sample is shaping up like the profile of adults in Thousand Oaks needs to be, right? And so by, by making sure that we have that random representative sample and then obviously using uh, survey questions that are both valid and reliable measures of, of your residents' opinions. Um, that enables us to be able to, at the end of the study with that group of 690, know that it's representative of what we would have found, uh, in the larger community within a pretty small margin there. That's about 3.7%.
Okay, one other, one other quick follow-up question, I think. Um, in terms of, uh, the casual observer might look at some of the, the slides and see a slight erosion of some of these satisfaction, uh, uh, measures that you did. I think one of the overall measure eroded 3% over 10 years. Is that a statistically, um, important thing to look at? Or is it, is it pretty much, uh, that's almost flat in terms of what your experience is with doing surveys?
Yeah, you're going to see variation year to year because you have two independently selected random samples, right? So even if opinions in the community were unchanged, just by having two independently selected random samples, you're likely to get a little bit of variation year to year, right? That's why we conduct what we call statistical significance testing, right? Where we will identify, is the magnitude of change between say 2017 and 2020 large enough that we can be confident that that change is in fact a reflection of a change in public opinion? As opposed to an artifact of independent random sampling. And in the survey, we do identify some areas that are statistically significant changes. For example, Drew mentioned one of them with respect to the, and I did earlier, the satisfaction level with the city's efforts to manage traffic congestion. That has increased in a significant way in the past three years. But those slight changes that you see in that, I think you're referencing in the quality of life in the, in the slide. That's not, those are not statistically significant, meaning we can't be confident that, 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 that difference is in fact reflective of a change in public opinion. It's too small, the difference over time.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, let me ask a question. Uh, how do you derive your random sample? Do you, uh, use precinct sheets to have, is it a random geographic? to have, is it random geographically? Or what is the measure for random?
So, back in the day, what we used to do was randomized phone numbers, right? That's how these surveys were conducted. You would take, you know, when everybody had a landline, all you had to do was choose phone numbers at random, and every household would effectively have an equal probability selection. We don't do that anymore because we aren't using telephone as the basis for the sampling design. What we do is we start with a database of residential addresses within the city of Thousand Oaks, and then we stratify those based on geography, and then we randomly select households from among those strata, right? So it's called a stratified random sample. That's how we choose it. Once we've done that, then we append the contact information. So we already have address, obviously, but then we append phone number, email. That's one of the things that's really changed in the past five years, is the ability to append information, contact information, based on household-level data. And that's how we then develop the contact information we can use to reach out and contact those households.
So it's strictly geographical, then?
Mm-hmm.
In other words, we have different districts. It's sort of like a monopoly board. You know, you have your hard block and hard place, but you've also got, also got another train and
Right.
so forth. So I, I think that has a little bit to do with their attitudes about things.
It can. I mean, keep in mind, we didn't, this was a broader survey. It wasn't just voters, right? It was, it was all residents. And so when we do just straight voter surveys, we'll often look at it by either council district, for example, in communities that have council district, or we look at it by aggregations of precincts. With 690 completes, you wouldn't want to break that down by individual precincts because you wouldn't have enough interviews in any one precinct to be able to speak reliably about the opinions. You have to kind of aggregate them to get to that point. But, you know, we certainly make sure that we're reaching out across the, the city and paying attention to not just demographics, right? Which is probably the more important thing, but also geographic.
All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor Adam. I have a couple of questions. I saw the difference in responses to our affordable housing, or to affordable housing, in that it ranked eighth in necessity, yet in the other question, and I forget what question it was, what number it was, it ranked a little bit higher than that. If you please explain that discrepancy.
So, question four, which is where you're saying it ranked eighth on the list, question four asks individuals to tell us what one change they think Thousand Oaks could make to make it a better place to live in the future, right? So they're taking the number one thing that comes in their mind, right? And when we asked that question, you have about 6% of people who said, provide more affordable housing. That was their number one issue, right? You had about 15% who mentioned limiting growth, preserving open spaces. We had about 11% who mentioned homelessness. So that's a measure of saliency, what was top of mind for that respondent, and it came in about eighth down at 6%. When you, that doesn't mean that the other 94% of people don't care about affordable housing, right? It just means that it wasn't their number one issue. It was somewhere further down their own personal list. When you look later in the survey, and this is for question, I think you just passed it, this was for question eight, where we presented them with a series of, of land uses and amenities and development types in the city and asked, is there too little of this currently? Is there about the right amount? Or is there too much? That is where we saw, where we specifically mentioned affordable housing. That's where we saw that affordable housing items sort of rise at the top of the list. And you had anywhere from 42% to 48% of your, your residents say that there's not enough affordable housing for select groups in the community, right? With the balance, most of the balance saying it's about right, and a small percentage saying there's too much. So that's the discrepancy. One is about what's the most important issue to improve the community. The other is where we get to ask them specifically about each type of, of, of development type, and, you know, how much of their, of it they perceive in the city. So that's why they, they come in a little different.
And they do. And that was very noticeable. Thank you. I also wanted to ask now, from affordable housing moving to homelessness, homelessness really never registered at all or wasn't on the radar of our questionnaire until this past April, May. And I wanted to have you explain why homelessness is just coming out of nowhere. It's, it seems, but...
Yeah. I mean, I think, again, if we can, if we flashback to pre-pandemic, right? And think about what a lot of the stories were in the media in Southern California, right? You saw a lot of stories about homelessness and, and how it was affecting certain communities and certain counties and strategies to deal with it, right? I think you also have seen, at least anecdotally, if you drive around in, in certain communities, you do see an uptick in the amount of homeless individuals you encounter. And so in communities in general, right, when we've been doing these types of polls around the state, we saw that between 2016, where homelessness really wasn't on the radar of issues for many respondents, homelessness could become the number one, right? In fact, several cities we worked with, homelessness, when you asked that question of what's the most important issue facing community, homelessness was the number one issue. So I think the fact that it shows up here in 2020 in Thousand Oaks is not surprising because it's popping up all, all over the state in a lot of ways. It isn't the number one issue, right? Interestingly enough, and so, like it has been in some other communities, but it's, it's certainly there, right? And you do see about 60% of your residents say that they've noticed an uptick in the number of homeless people in Thousand Oaks.
Well, not only is there an uptick in the, a number of homeless person in Thousand Oaks, but the survey also showed that people are more understanding and accepting of providing services to homeless persons in our city.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, that is also something that is, is interesting. I, I think that, this is just me speaking offhand, but again, based on a lot of the surveys we've done for other communities, I think there's recognition from residents that regardless of how you feel about homeless individuals, it's, it's a problem that has to be addressed, right? I mean, we may differ in our policy prescriptions, but we can all probably agree that this is something you can't just ignore, right? You have to address it in some way. And fortunately, I think in Thousand Oaks, what you see is there is really good consensus on several different strategies that the city could consider and, and how it addresses homelessness. And as I mentioned, regardless of whether you have a positive or negative view of homeless individuals, there were three strategies there that had at least two-thirds of residents say that they would support.
Well, I think this is important to, to know, and also to distribute this sort of information, because this is an election year, and we have several candidates running for city council, some of whom may just think that homelessness is not to be addressed and just to be swept under the rug. And I think it is very important to let everybody know that the city of Thousand Oaks and its residents are increasingly becoming aware of the needs and services necessary for, for us to provide, meaning us, the city of Thousand Oaks. And that's more of a statement than a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones, go ahead, sir.
I wonder, this section on rating the city of Thousand Oaks in terms of our services, et cetera, how, how do we compare with other cities that you have surveyed?
I think, you know, the city of Thousand Oaks has always been one of the top performers that we've worked with, right? And the fact that, you know, again, you've been able to maintain a, you know, nine out of 10 residents giving the city high marks for your provision of services in general over time is, is, you know, is really good, right? So, I mean, you're in the top tier of the cities that we work with in that respect.
Do they generally have the same hierarchy of, excuse me, of services, starting with library and then going to fire and police protection and so forth?
Yeah, it's funny, that, that list of the specific service areas and levels of satisfaction does vary a lot, community to community, right? Meaning the things that are at the top of the list in satisfaction, in one community might not be the same thing as in other communities, right? So you do see a fair amount of variation at that level. You know, I always look down on that list and say, you know, some are all, some are going to rise at the top, and some are going to go to the bottom. But you don't have a single survey that has less than 70% of residents say that they're satisfied with the city's efforts to provide those services. That's not often the case. A lot of times when you work with cities, there's going to be one or two things at the bottom that are going to be more like 40%, 50% satisfaction, right? And so the city has done a good job, kind of, not only providing high-level services, but really balancing that across a wide range of, of different service areas, so that you don't have any areas that are sort of, you know, neglected, so to speak.
Would you have any advice to give us, based on the results of the survey, so we could improve?
Well, I would say, number one, keep doing what you're doing, right? And what I mean by that is, anytime you have strong scores like you have here and high levels of satisfaction across the board, if you do nothing else, just continue to do what you're already doing, right? Because you're already doing a very solid job in meeting residents' needs. You know, to the extent that you have the ability to kind of focus in a few areas, right? You know, I think the areas of traffic congestion, although you've made a lot of progress in that in the last three years, that's clearly something residents care about, and they'd like to see some improvement there. You know, wrestling with that issue of how do you, on one hand, protect open space and manage growth and development, while at the same time, address your affordable housing needs, right? As well as residents' desires for economic development, those things can, can be in tension, trying to figure out the best way to kind of, you know, meld those together in a way that's a bit of a balancing act. That's probably your other, sort of, I think, area to focus on and, and the challenge that you face moving forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I do have additional questions.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Dr. McLarnie, I also see that Nextdoor shot up out of nowhere, it seems, in terms of source of information. I personally describe Nextdoor, and, excuse my language, as the toilet of the internet sometimes, because it is just so highly controversial and rude. But so is other social media. Have you seen that sort of uptick in, in reliance by residents on Nextdoor in other cities?
I have, not at all, but certainly in some communities. And I, and I think your assessment of it as a, a messaging platform, so to speak, or a communication platform is, is pretty close to probably what mine is as well. I don't know, I mean, there's just a lot of them, on, you know, and I see them, I'm, we're on it in my own neighborhood, and the stuff, and my wife will come in and go, I cannot believe what neighbor so-and-so said, like, she seemed like such a nice lady. And then, you know, you, you see her on Nextdoor, and she just grows horns and, and fangs. And, and, you know, I'm not saying all the communications are that way, but, I mean, it's certainly not the most civil of, of platforms for sharing information and getting news and information. And so I think the challenge that faces is not that you, as a city, you know, I've had some cities say, well, should we be on Nextdoor? Should we have more presence there? And it's like, it's probably not a great idea, right? Considering the platform, and you're better off controlling your own messages and, and your own communications to residents, and figuring out a way to, to, you know, to increase those. And those are ones that come from you with your own message and what you think is important, and your, your ability to sort of decide at what level of detail we share that information.
And you are correct. However, when you have, when you see misinformation on Nextdoor or other social media, there is an expected sort of responsibility where you have to defend yourself, or correct the facts, or correct the misstatements, I should say. And, and so you are, whether you want it or not, really forced to participate in, in this dialogue, in this engagement on social media, as I said, whether you like it or not. And that's not necessarily always a healthy thing, but I, the city of Thousand Oaks, as well as our police department, have done a very good job in trying to disseminate misinformation and disseminate factual information. So, so that is what I noticed. Nextdoor just moving up in terms of information out of nowhere. And I think that residents just need to be aware that a lot of wrong information is on Nextdoor. Then I also noticed that there is an increased attention or preference to protect the environment. I think there was a slight uptick. It may not have been significant, statistically, statistically significant, but there is an uptick in wanting to preserve the environment and oak trees and other landmark trees. If you could please speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, we saw, you compare what, when you ask residents, what's the, you know, what's the one change that the city government could make to improve quality of life in Thousand Oaks? You know, in 2017, for example, that was reduced traffic congestion, right? And we saw that you made a lot of headway in that area in terms of resident satisfaction. It's no longer number one. In fact, it's no longer even top five, right, on that list. But the issue of limiting growth and preserving open space, which previously was the sort of number three in 2017, is now number one in 2020. You know, I think that not only reflects sort of the underlying values of your community, right, of what they value, I think also, a, a couple of, of sort of larger developments are at, in, in play here. One is that, you know, as you, you know, if you go back to, say, 2009, which was right at the beginning of the Great Recession, you didn't really have any development happening, right? Because the economy had slowed down so much, you had projects that were planned that were never built, and you just didn't have construction, period, for quite, for a number of years in general in most communities. As the economy came back and, and got really red hot over the last four or five years, you've seen a lot more development. These are for projects that were entitled in many respects, right? But, so it's more visible, right, that, that now we're having construction in, in areas where we didn't have before. That is going to kind of resonate with some people who want to try and limit growth and development, right? They're going, now they're starting to see these projects go up. So that's part of it. And I think also part of it, you know, the last four or five months, people have realized that our open spaces and outdoor areas are kind of where we can recreate safely, right, in a pandemic. People are going out and hiking more and biking more. And, I mean, I've heard that, you know, if you want to get an e-bike, there's about a six-month wait around the nation, right, for these things. I mean, people are trying to go out and make use of these things. And, and that also kind of reminds them in some ways of, of what they want to protect.
Thank you so much, Dr. McLarnie. I think that this survey really does prove that decision-makers in the city of Thousand Oaks have got to find a balance between development and the environment. And that is super important. It has always been super important here in the, in the city of Thousand Oaks and its history. And it continues to do so, that you cannot just try to build your way out of, out of certain issues, but you also need to respect the environment and our heritage. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I think that Acorn Newspaper ought to send True North Research a dozen roses for their survey. And we may see that survey on the front page of the next edition of the Acorn. Just a suggestion.
Moral of the story, read your Acorn. All right. Thank you, Dr. McLarnie. You know, there were a lot of different things you can glean from this survey, of course. One thing that stuck out for me, when you talk about housing and homelessness, and as we all know, there's many causes for homelessness, but one of the causes is lack of affordable housing. And it seems to me that the residents were clear, majority of them want to see entry level, more entry-level workforce, affordable housing here in the city. They prefer it in a mix of townhomes, condos, or apartments. They want to see it concentrated in a few developments close to transit, stores, and restaurants. They don't necessarily want it in existing neighborhoods. And it's interesting, because that's, that's been the strategy. We have a few, very few, what we call opportunity sites along the 101 corridor, where entry-level or workforce housing could be, could be built. And it seems to me that the survey is acknowledging that and, and approving of that approach. So we'll have to see what happens. As Dr. McLarnie said, development was stopped for a number of years. There's been a, a very small amount that has restarted here in the city. We have one or two projects underway at the moment. But if you look at our situation... But if you look at our situation over the last five years, I believe we put in four hundred units over five years. Works out to about eighty units a year, it's less than one percent of the housing stock in the city. So there really has been a slow growth approach. And of course, as everybody knows, the open space that we have is highly valued and will be preserved and protected, I think, no matter what happens. But anyway, thank you, Dr. McLarnie. Great report. And with that, I'll need a motion to accept the report.
You have a speaker.
Hold on just a minute. We have City Attorney Noonan would like to make a comment.
I was just going to say, we have one public speaker.
Oh, and we do. And that was your comment. And I thank you very much. And I, we do have a public speaker and that is Shelley Smith. I think she's phoning in. Oh, we're getting a no-go on that. So Shelley, we'll hear from you later perhaps. All right. So with that, if I can get a motion to accept the report, please.
Also move Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Jones gave us a motion to receive the report. Vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bild Delapena?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And Mayor, that motion carries four zero.
All right. Thank you. All right. And next up, we're going to go to the Alliance for the Arts report, correct? All right. Very good. And Jonathan Saret, our Deputy Cultural Affairs Director is going to give us that report. Jonathan, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Adam and council members. Twice a year, TO Arts comes before you to present a six-month update on their activity. And tonight, we're joined by TO Arts Chair Leanne Nielsen, who will give our presentation by video. Leanne, are you there?
Looks like they're working on it upstairs. Just give it a quick minute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Leanne?
Yes.
There we go. We hear you.
You can hear me now.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. I've lost connection a couple of times, so hopefully it won't happen again.
You're on video. We got you.
Okay, good. Well, good evening, Mayor Adam and City Councilmembers. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts Board of Directors, it's my pleasure to present our report covering TO Arts operations and programming for the last six months ending June 30th, 2020. Tonight, I will provide you with a brief overview of some of the highlights contained in our report. The TO Arts Board voted to approve amendments to the organization's bylaws on March 12th, 2020. During the TO Arts Strategic Retreat last fall, the Board discussed ways to increase diversity within our membership. The Board directed staff to prepare amendments to the TO Arts bylaws, increasing the membership of the Board from seven directors up to eleven directors. In accordance with the Memorandum of Understanding between TO Arts and the city, these amendments were brought forward for your ratification this evening. An ad hoc nominating committee has been formed to identify potential candidates for these new Board Director seats and to fill an unanticipated vacancy due to resignation. We received a resignation from TO Arts Board Director Judy Linton in May after three years of service to TO Arts and decades of service and support for arts organizations within the local community. We're grateful for Judy's service and we wish her well in her retirement. Additionally, TO Arts prepared for the transition of the Executive Director with the expected retirement of the Cultural Affairs Director. The Deputy Cultural Affairs Director took on that role of Acting Executive Director for TO Arts in January and he will continue to serve in that capacity until a permanent appointment is made. The TO Arts Board received and accepted the annual audit prepared by our independent external auditor for fiscal year 2018-19. This report reflected all of TO Arts' financial activities from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. The Board is currently working with staff to finalize the operating budget for fiscal year 2020-21 and is expected to discuss the item at our September meeting. The limitations and restrictions of COVID-19 will impact many of our regular programming activities. With regards to marketing and branding, TO Arts is continuing to implement our branding and communications plan, which we've been working on throughout the last year. As you may recall, last year, the Board adopted a new logo, which was the first step to this implementation process. The plan will promote a comprehensive brand identity with expanded social media engagement, a new website, updated vision and mission statements, and a targeted case statement. TO Arts is grateful for the support of nearly two hundred and fifty businesses and individual donors who provide financial and in-kind contributions supporting TO Arts programs and activities. In fiscal year 2019-20, these contributions totaled over five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This February, TO Arts hosted a gratitude reception to show our appreciation for donors and supporters. At the event, TO Arts presented a special recognition for outgoing Executive Director and Cultural Affairs Director Barry McComb. The Lifetime Heart of the Arts Award was also presented that evening to Board Director Eloise Cohen, who has been a longtime advocate and supporter of this community and especially the arts. COVID-19 has had a significant impact on everyone, but the live arts and entertainment industry has been hit especially hard. The suspension of live events has altered the ways in which we interact. In reaction to this, TO Arts pivoted to digital engagement to stay connected with our network, even though we had to keep our physical distance. The live-at-home activities provided TO Arts subscribers to meet a different VAC staff member each week and to view that staff member's curated YouTube playlist. In June, our Development Director Nikki Richardson led a discussion on the state of the performing arts in the Cano Valley with representatives of local performing arts organizations to hear about what they were doing and how they are moving through this ongoing crisis. Our ongoing partnership with the Cano Schools Foundation enabled TO Arts to bring National Geographic Live speakers to present directly to students at their schools. In January, Kobe Boykins, a NASA engineer working at JPL, presented Exploring Mars to the students at Thousand Oaks High School. And adventurer and photographer Andy Mann presented From Summit to Sea to the students of Westlake High School in February. Unfortunately, the remaining two National Geographic Live speakers had to be rescheduled. In February, TO Arts also presented Cal Lutheran's Kingsman Shakespeare Company's production of As You Like It to more than three hundred and fifty students in the Sheer Forum. Experiential learning is a significant part of the arts education, which is why we provided a hundred and fifty tickets for the Safe Passage Program to attend the March presentation of Dinosaur World Live. Under the CAP Presents banner, TO Arts presented forty-seven performances in fiscal year 2019-20 between July 1st, 2019 and March 12th, 2020. These performances attracted thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ten patrons and grossed one point eight five million in ticket sales revenue. This year's performers included Tony Bennett, David Foster and Catherine McCee, Chicago, Jean Robertson, Travis Tritt, and our favorite Tupperware lady, Dixie. Unfortunately, twelve performances had to be rescheduled or canceled due to COVID-19. Along with the suspension of live events, the concessions operation at the Performing Arts Center had to be halted. When faced with the likelihood of expiring inventory, TO Arts was able to support food relief efforts in the community by donating more than four thousand, five hundred dollars in perishable, non-alcoholic food and beverages. We extend our gratitude to our contract food and beverage director, Toby Neuz, for coordinating those deliveries. We're also pleased to present our fourth season of the National Geographic Live Speaker Series. This series continues to grow in popularity and features filmmakers, photographers, explorers, astronauts and scientists directly off the pages of National Geographic Magazine. We were honored and grateful to have former Mayor Joel Price serve as our moderator for this year's series. Unfortunately, we were only able to present the first two speakers this season. However, we have rescheduled our remaining two speakers to join us in the Cavali Theater in April and May of 2021. As previously mentioned, our National Geographic Live speakers present directly to middle school and high school students in the morning prior to their events. We look forward to continuing this relationship when live events are able to safely resume. During fiscal year 2019-20, TO Arts once again contributed five hundred thousand dollars in funding to the theater's fund to help underwrite the operations of the Bank of America Performing Arts Center. The Dr. Raymond M. Olson Performance Grant Program was established to provide local nonprofits with financial assistance to make usage of the theater facilities more accessible. Our Board has approved the distribution of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding for fiscal year 2019-20 for the three resident companies and six local nonprofit arts organizations that present performances at the Cavali Theater and the Sheer Forum. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, many of the organizations were unable to do the later performances of their season. The Board will consider the remaining balances of the grant later this fall as performances may be able to be rescheduled next year. Updated CAP Presents programming guides were distributed in January to seventy-five thousand households. This was a supplemental marketing component to our summer and fall brochures, which were previously sent last year. COVID-19 has wrought havoc upon our daily lives and has prevented the ability to serve our core function, to bring people together, to experience the arts together as a community. But TO Arts will not be deterred. We are looking for ways to adapt and improve how we reach people. As we adjust to prepare for a post-COVID world, we're exploring opportunities to improve and enhance ourselves, not just in response to this crisis, but to prepare for long-term sustainability and success. We will continue to expand our arts education programs outside of the theaters to reach students in their schools. We're moving forward in partnership with Cano Valley Unified School District for a new initiative called Access Arts to provide visual arts instruction to all Cano Valley USD elementary schools this year. This gives us the ability to impact the lives of more than six thousand students. We will be continuing our Board development efforts to identify new Board Directors while looking to increase diversity, expand our reach and broaden our focus. This fall, TO Arts will again hold a strategic planning retreat to identify additional goals and objectives for the upcoming year. TO Arts Presents will be focusing on resuming responsibly and safely with a big focus on the 2021-22 programming season. We will continue to work on fully implementing the comprehensive branding and communications plan. And engagement will be top of mind as TO Arts continues to adapt, finding new ways of staying connected and bringing people together. On behalf of the TO Arts Board and staff and the millions of patrons whose lives have been enriched by attending performances at the Bank of America Performing Arts Center, I want to thank you for your continued support of our efforts and our activities. This completes our report. Acting Executive Director Jonathan Saret and I are available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Leanne. Let's have some questions from the council members.
Hello, Mayor. Yeah, I guess I'll start it off again.
All right.
Leanne, thank you for everything you're doing with the TO Arts Council and everything. I think we're making great strides there. Unfortunately, we've all hit this speed bump called COVID and it definitely has hurt our efforts this year to keep arts forefront in the community. Given that the performing arts have been so heavily hit, can you explain some of the things you've done for maybe visual arts, supporting different actions within the community?
Thank you, Councilmember Engler. Leanne, I'm not sure if your connection has unfrozen, but I'd be happy to take that question. In the downtime, since we've not been able to focus on presenting the live performing arts that is core to our mission and a significant part of our programming, TO Arts has focused rather on engagement through those digital activities, such as the Live-at-Home series and the State of the Performing Arts Facebook Live program that Nikki Richardson, our Development Director, put together. Additionally, we've been focusing on how to provide that Access Arts program to enhance arts education for all elementary school students in the Cano Valley Unified School District. And that program, we are in the midst of finalizing and we expect to implement along with CVUSD later this fall to provide virtual arts instruction. And that would be a combination of visual arts, that would be an inclusion of performing arts and utilizing a lot of our performing arts partners to provide those services as well, just from a virtual environment.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the TO Arts, as well as our Acting Manager of Theaters right now, Jonathan Saret, for stepping up really. Because the arts, entertainment and everybody who works for the industry are considered to be in phase four of the reopening and will be the very last to be able to come back and perform or serve the community. So with that said, I just really want to thank TO Arts and the city and all of the other organizations for hanging in there and doing the best that they can do under some very, very dire circumstances. And I just wanted to show my appreciation for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Jonathan, do we have any tentative plans for when we might be able to resume our operation at the Cavali Theater? Say sometime next spring or summer?
It's a great question, Councilmember Jones. It's one that we ponder ourselves on a daily basis as we know changes are happening day to day, minute by minute, and sometimes quicker than that. At the moment, we've suspended all live events happening at the Cavali Theater with regard to having a live audience in place. However, the television and film industry will likely be able to resume a lot faster and in many cases has already started to resume. So we are trying to position ourselves as a filming location, albeit we can't provide the services that we typically would with a live audience in place. But if we can provide, which I and a number of our staff truly believe we can, a safe, responsible environment for people to do their filming of television and other filming or streaming projects, then certainly we will make ourselves available to be an onsite location for that activity. At the moment, we are, as the Mayor Protem said, at the behest of, we're waiting on direction from the state with regard to direction from the state with regard to getting to Stage Four. I personally hope it's a lot faster than than some of the guesses that are out there, but that's just it, there's a lot of guesses. So at this point, we are planning for live events to resume after the new year in 2021.
Well, we have tickets, so I'm looking forward to using them.
I'm looking forward to greeting you in the lobby and having those events.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Leanne, for all the work you do for TO Arts. And Jonathan, thank you for working hard to keep the theaters engaged, even though we can't have performances there. It's a great idea to bring in people to film here and the like, keeps the theaters engaged, keeps them revenue flowing. And, you know, here in the city, we've always had an egalitarian approach to the arts. We want to make them as accessible as possible to everybody that we can, and TO Arts does just that. I mean, field trips for school kids, National Geographic speakers, to Caneo Valley Unified School District, tickets for Safe Passes kids, the fact that you donated all the food in the concession stand when we couldn't obviously use it anymore, all these are great things to bring the arts to everybody we can in the City of Thousand Oaks. So hopefully, we're going to see a big bounce back in 2021 and come back bigger and stronger than ever. And I appreciate your leadership in this, Jonathan and Leanne, and here's to a much better 2021. Thank you. I guess we'll need a motion too to accept the report, if I may have one, please.
A move to accept the report. This is Claudia Bildelapena.
All right, from Mayor Protem Bildelapena. And we can vote on that, please.
Councilmember Angler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bildelapena?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
And that's a yes for me, too.
And that motion carries 40-0.
All right. Now, we're going to go to the last item for the evening, a department report on community funding to alleviate some problems that we're having with COVID-19. And Melissa Hurtado has been working hard on this, and we'd like to hear that report from you. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you so much, Mayor Adam, and thank you, council members, for hearing the report tonight. I'm here to discuss a few COVID-19-related community assistance programs. As we all know, this has been an unprecedented time in our history. The actions taken to protect our health have had financial impacts that have affected many in our community. Some of those folks impacted have reached out to city staff and city council members with their stories, looking for resources. While there have been assistance programs made available by other agencies and nonprofit groups, as this pandemic continues, the need is still there. Some of those impacted financially include our residents, nonprofit groups providing support, performing arts groups, and businesses. City Council recently took two actions to assist our local business community. Those actions included approving over $340,000 in CARES Act Community Development Block Grant Funding for a small business grant program, and donating $20,000 to the Chamber of Commerce Caneo Valley Small Business Relief Fund. Tonight's focus will be on the performing arts groups, nonprofit organizations, and residents. We are asking city council to authorize the city manager to design and implement three relief programs. As we go through these programs, please keep in mind that while the basic structure of them have been established, some of the details are still being worked on. So the first program is the Bank of America Performing Arts Center Rent Relief Program. This program would offer a credit to the three resident companies in the amount of $10,000 each, and $1,500 to other Thousand Oaks-based nonprofit performing arts groups. These credits would apply to the rental of either the Share or Forum Theater to help offset costs when they return to live productions. The idea behind this method of assistance is to not only provide a bit of relief, but to also encourage a return of the arts to the Bank of America Performing Arts Center. These credits would be available through December 31, 2021. The second program is geared to the nonprofit groups in Thousand Oaks that are providing COVID relief. We've seen the tremendous work being done by our nonprofits during this pandemic. Some have created new programs, while others have seen their existing programs grow exponentially. With the overwhelming financial support needed to run these programs, the intention is to provide 10 organizations $10,000 for a total of $100,000 in assistance. While we do already have a social services grant program, this year's cycle has passed, and grants were awarded for programs that were applied for prior to the virus. This program is different in that an organization will qualify based on their overall relief efforts and will not be specific to any one program. Organizations would apply for the grant, and based on the criteria established, the Community Funding Review Committee would make a recommendation to city council to award 10 organizations funding. So let's talk about where this funding will come from for these two programs just discussed. In 1985, city council set aside funds for a grant program. There are four community grants, with three of them funded by the general fund. As I mentioned, the social services grants were awarded in May. The community events grant and the sports facility grant each have $100,000 budgeted this fiscal year. And while there are important programs, this virus has caused many priorities to shift this year. Staff believes that the performing arts rent relief and the social services emergency relief programs would be a more fitting use of the grant funds for this year. So the last program that we are going to discuss tonight is the Residential Rental Assistance Program. We are nearing the end of the eviction moratorium, and tenants will only have six months to pay back rent before facing eviction. For many who are still unable to work, this may be an impossible situation. The city received a community benefit fee of $1.25 million from the developer at 299 Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This program would use $1 million of those monies to fund the program. The rental assistance program is designed to help those who have been financially impacted by COVID-19 and are behind on their rent payments. The program includes both the tenant and the landlord in the process, and payments are made directly to the landlord. To be eligible, applicants must reside in Thousand Oaks, have an established need, must show that they have been impacted financially by COVID-19, must be on the lease agreement, and only one member of a household may apply. Those who are low income and did not receive assistance through the county's rental assistance program would be given priority over the other applicants. We are proposing assistance in the amount of $3,600 for those residing in a studio or one-bedroom unit, and those in a two-bedroom unit or larger would receive $5,600. These amounts are based on an average two-month rent. We recognize that a household rent for two months may be more or less than this assistance amount, but it is a method of providing relief that is manageable from an administrative standpoint. It is not intended to make the tenant whole with their landlords, but to provide some relief. And for those who pay less in rent for two months than this assistance amount, the landlord must agree to apply any remaining funds to their future rent. The number of households we can help with this program depends on the mix of applications that we receive, based on studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or larger. But it would be in the neighborhood of about 220 households. If approved tonight, the city would negotiate with the county of Ventura to use the same program that they used for their rental assistance program by piggybacking on their contract with the vendor. Similar to the county's rental assistance program, we would have an online application that would first be completed by the tenant and subsequently the landlord. The goal is to make the application simple for the users, not to deter them from seeking assistance. The software contains auditing functions that flag potential fraudulent applications and will seek to include as many fraud prevention procedures without making the application process too onerous. The county did a fantastic job with their portal, and if we move forward with using that software, we will emulate most of it while taking their learning lessons into account. So applicants will fall into one of these tiers, based on whether or not they are low income and whether or not they received assistance through the county program. Staff did not want to exclude those who aren't low income or already received assistance through their county program, as this pandemic has affected many at varying income levels. And although they may have received previous assistance from the county, the need may still be there as this pandemic continues. However, priority is given to those who are low income and those who did not receive assistance through the county program. If we have more applicants than available funding, those who are in the lower-numbered tiers would get funded first. So for example, if we have enough funds for Tiers One and Two, those would be awarded. If we are in Tier Three with funding for only half of those applicants, we would utilize the random lottery process in place within the software to provide for a fair process. Some additional things we considered included the cost above $1 million of funding. As part of the recommendation, we have included a budget adjustment for the software and advertising costs. The staff time will not be a hard cost to the city, but will require us to shift staff members temporarily to assist with tasks such as answering questions from applicants, assisting people with their applications, and reviewing and auditing the applications and other administrative assignments. We recognize that we need to be creative in how we reach those who need the help. Traditional advertising will still be used, but we will lean on our community partners who are already working with many of these families to help get the information to these families. Additionally, we will be looking to those same partners to possibly help those folks through the application process. We realize that completing an online application will be a challenge to some, and we are looking for ways to make the application accessible to all. If approved tonight, the city manager will enter into a memorandum of understanding with the county if we can negotiate that, and we will begin working with them on the development of the software. We will concurrently work on our procedures and documents and develop our marketing plan and make contact with community partners to assist with outreach. We estimate that we can have the application live to the public in about a month. So to summarize, there are three programs we are proposing tonight. You have four recommendations before you that include a resolution suspending two grants for this fiscal year and authorizing the city manager to execute these three programs. Additionally, there are three recommendations for budget and transfers to these programs, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Melissa. Yeah, I'm really glad this is in front of us this evening. The county program for rental assistance has expired, it's been subscribed, and the money's been doled out, but there's still a need here in the City of Thousand Oaks. And I don't have to tell my fellow council members that people here in town have lost their jobs, they've had reduced hours, they're paying more for childcare, medical costs, and all this adds up to an urgency to keep people in their apartments and homes and whatever it may be. And also, of course, we are able to repurpose some of the events and sports endowments money that we don't, we're not going to have any events in sports at this point, so it makes total sense to repurpose that as well. And I would like to make a suggestion there, if I may, and then you can tell me what you think. We have $200,000 in those two grant programs. I would like to suggest that we bump up the money to the resident companies to about $15,000 apiece, that'd be about $45,000. We take another 15, which is what you would suggest, and we spread it out to approximately 10 local nonprofits. And it's going to be, as far as I'm concerned, be up to staff about who gets what. You can certainly determine the priority and the deservedness of the funds. That'll leave $140,000 for social services, like your name, it's Safe Passage, Senior Concerns, Adelante Comunidad, all these organizations are dealing with COVID problems, and they can use our help. So that would be the breakdown I would like to suggest. And why don't we all talk about it? Who'd like to go first?
Hi, Mayor Bob Angler here again.
Yes, Bob, hi.
Doing well over here. I'll have to have you restate your adjustments to our money when we get done with this, but I think the program, I wish, you know, as I agree 100% with you, this is something that we really need to do for our community. And the money, I understand, is coming from our community benefit fund that was asked for when 299 went into view. Is this something that is going to, my question, I think, is how long will this program be available? Do we have an estimate of how quickly it will go?
We will work on setting a timeline for how long the application period will be open. We're not going to make it a first-come, first-served type of deal. What I will say is that the county left it open for a relatively short amount of time, and we feel that perhaps our residents may have benefited from that program. More of our residents would have benefited from that program had the application been open for just a little longer. So we're going to look at it, and we obviously want to get people money as soon as possible, so leaving it open too long wouldn't be ideal. But if we can leave it open for three weeks or so rather than two weeks, it just provides them a little extra time to get their applications in.
And these funds are available strictly to Thousand Oaks residents?
That is correct. They must be a resident of Thousand Oaks. We will check the addresses to ensure that they are within the city limits of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you.
Yeah, $1 million for rental assistance here in the City of Thousand Oaks is certainly a significant amount of money, and we think we can help at least a couple hundred families, right, Melissa?
Right, about 220, we're estimating.
220, great. Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'm trying to figure out the lighting here because I am outside. Can you, I'm...
We got you. There you are.
Just a tiny bit.
Wait a minute.
But...
There you go.
You know, thank you so much for suggesting to increase the amount to the, to our, oh, gosh, this is, this looks terrible. Maybe, maybe I should just turn it off.
Rather unusual view, but maybe we should just go to...
Turn it off, and I will just talk, it doesn't matter. Thank you for suggesting to increase the amount to our resident arts organizations as well as, really, other arts organizations, simply because, as you know, Mr. Mayor, the arts industry is in the fourth phase of reopening, and they have not reopened. Not, I mean, unlike other industries, they have opened and then closed and waiting to reopen again. The fourth phase has not reopened and will not do so in a while. We have high-caliber, award-winning, I mean, Tony Award-winning or nominated musicians and LA film musicians driving for DoorDash and Postmates right now. I just want you to know that, everybody, because they need to make ends meet. And the least we can do is increase the amount, $5,000 per resident organization. I would even suggest that we increase it to $10,000 per resident organization, only because the starving artist as we know it is actually hurting so much more. It is, it is not only artists, it is teachers who teach the arts who are hurting, and I know that the city has helped in the past with other nonprofit organizations such as Senior Concerns and others to help them, and rightfully so. But we also have to look at those who have been completely overlooked by this pandemic or in this pandemic. So if we could increase that amount, not just $5,000 per resident organization, but perhaps $10,000 per resident organization, so that they can actually give these musicians and artists and singers and performers a job, I think that is super important. We will not be able to necessarily pay their rent or do anything else, but we can do the best that we can do in order to provide them a forum in which they can exhibit their skill and actually brighten the spirits of so many of us who are in desperate need of having our spirits brightened in this pandemic. So if we could increase that amount, not only by $5,000, but by $10,000 per resident organization and perhaps other nonprofits, I would very much appreciate that.
All right, Mayor Protem. Yeah, it's difficult because with limited funds and so much need, you have to strike a balance here. Let me ask the city manager a quick question. Don't we have a, we have a fund for the arts, and don't we usually keep about $10,000 or $15,000 in there for court-on-court emergencies? Did I get that right?
So I'll have our finance director, Jamie Boscarino, speak specifically to that, but I just wanted to make sure to emphasize for the council and community, so that everyone's clear. What's being proposed tonight, these are, would be grants to offset rental of the facility. So it's, these are not... So it's, these are not direct cash payments to the organizations. What was proposed this evening for the three resident companies was 10,000. I think I heard from Mayor Protem a desire, or from Mayor Adam, desire for additional 5,000, and then perhaps from Mayor Protem, desire for additional 10,000. That would be 20,000 per resident company, total of $60,000. So we have a number of different funds. I think what Mayor Adams referencing is the sort of set aside that's pulled back for emergency situations in these various grant funds. Jamie, can you speak to that at all?
Oh, let me get your mic. There you go. You're on.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Yeah, so these funds are particularly coming from the two grant programs that we have every year, one for the sports facilities grant and one for the community events grant. So as Ms. Hurtado mentioned, we're looking to repurpose those two grant funds this year. Each of those grants are up to $100,000. Sometimes we only appropriate 85,000, leaving that 15,000 available for emergency purposes. So there is 100,000 that is available, whether it's 20, 20, and 20 to the resident arts, so 60, then that would leave another 40,000 for the other companies out there that, for rental credits as well. But it's up to 100,000 that is available.
Up to 200,000.
For the, for this particular program that we are talking about, it's up to 100,000.
But it's 200 total.
Yeah, so the other 100,000, though, we're talking about using for the nonprofit program for social services.
Uh-huh. Well, it all blends together, doesn't it?
Yeah, in total between the two, you're at 200,000.
I mean, we could, you know...
We're always cautious about blending as it relates to the programs. So we have community events endowment fund, and you have the sports facilities endowment fund. And so we were keeping those two bifurcated. You see a resolution as part of this action. So in order to keep it, keep it formal and clean and that there's a chain on, or on the record as to what the council's action has been this year, remember, these grant funds have been longstanding tradition for the city, and they're governed by resolution. So, you know, actions regarding that, keeping them in some pockets is helpful from an accounting perspective.
Correct.
And as Mr. Powers mentioned, these aren't outright cash grants to the resident companies or the smaller local nonprofits. These are simply theater credits, so when they come back to us, they have a credit versus their cost to perform in the theater, which is certainly, you know, helpful to get them relaunched. Okay, well, let's just kind of keep that in abeyance for a moment and see if Mr. Jones has some comments.
No, I'm just interested in all these figures that you're throwing around here. I'm amenable to whatever is appropriate, so I'm waiting for a motion.
Oh, all right. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, Bob Engler, please.
Yes, Councilmember Engler.
Thank you. So what you're proposing then, rather than the, I think we had a $10,000 credit for the resident companies and the balance to the non, other companies that are nonprofits within the community, you're proposing moving that to 15,000. I think Mayor Protem would like to see the 20,000.
You got that. That's correct. That would be the discussion.
Basically, we have $100,000 pot. The nonprofit companies also will need the help to keep going, so I'm not sure how far we should, we should push to our resident companies as opposed to other nonprofits that may also need help to get back in those, into the facilities and need the break on the rent. So I'm not quite sure, there probably is a sweet spot, but I don't know, doubling it is that sweet spot? I'm not in hurs by that.
Mr. Councilmember Engler, if I can just make a comment, and having the discussion with Mr. Sarette when looking at this program, and then now just even looking at the $15,000 amount that's being proposed. So we have three resident companies. One of them will easily use the $15,000 pretty quickly. One, $15,000 would cover their rent for the entire year, and the other, the last one, they would get close to reaching $15,000 worth of rent during the year if the performance levels were to remain the same. So you have the varying levels of use of the venues, and that's sort of how we came up with the calculation. So 15,000 would not be unreasonable. $20,000 would be more than a year's worth for two of the organizations.
Well, that's good input. So Bob was talking about a sweet spot. It sounds like the sweet spot would be about 15. Yeah?
That could be, that's a possibility, yeah, if they would cover two groups' rent for the entire year.
Okay.
Melissa, a quick question on that as well. Do you have a feel for the nonprofits, what their cost would be and how they would benefit? What would be the quote-quote "sweet spot" for nonprofits?
So before Melissa responds, one of the things I wanted to speak to regarding the nonprofits and in conversations with the county, you know, one of the things you have to manage against here is where the need exists. And so there is some value and some perspective on putting a cap in place, and then having that cap, we see where the need comes in, able to make an initial grant. This is how the county ran their program. And then they were able to go back and get additional authorization to process additional grants if there was a need, if they were overextended and there was a need greater than the immediate money that they had. That may be one thing for the council to consider as it relates to the, especially to the social service, that's a much wider net out there. Frankly, the cultural arts grants as well, especially out into the community, the nonprofit-based piece of this, you know, we are going to need to book a wide variety of performances that are profit-driven performances in order to get our venue back on its feet. We're going to very likely have gone almost an entire year by the time we have a performance here, and so ensuring that we're not creating a scenario in which we have a run on the venue that is essentially already subsidized by $60 in order to book those performances. We obviously want to find calendar dates for those entities and book those entities, but we're also going to have a real need to get revenue-based performances back into the venue so that we can be able to stand up the economics of the theater complex as well. It's just something I want to make sure that the council is considering.
Very true, very true. And I do want to make, when we talk about sweet spots and impact and the like with these social service organizations, they are so vital, and I've visited many of them over the last six months, so vital in dealing with COVID-related problems. And I want to make sure that the money we give them will have an impact and be able to help them with their continuing endeavors. And so the impact there, we're talking, I think Francine Spriegel is the one that might be identifying some of these social service organizations, and she said that maybe 10 might be identified, correct?
Just in her working with the organizations, she identified about 10. There may be a couple of more that come in, but initially, that was the count that we came up with, and that is how we came up with the 10,000 per organization as well. Because 10,000 is, while it's not going to provide, it's not going to cover their programs, it's going to provide a decent amount of help, and if we dilute it too much, we don't, we don't want to have to, we want to be able to provide enough assistance that it'll make a difference in their program.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So suppose we could set it up where we would give staff latitude based on need if a social service agency, you know, might better serve with $12,000, that could be a range, could it not?
And in that scenario, my recommendation would likely be that we would establish the parameters of the program with ceilings tonight, and that we would return to the city council with an update, and additional authority would be sought if needed, if there was additional need that we thought was warranted to be...
Mr. Manager, I can't hear you.
Councilmember Jones, I was just indicating that we would ask tonight to establish some ceiling-based criteria for the programs financially, and then we would plan to return to the city council seeking additional authority as needed, rather than just delegating that authority. And that's because there'll be a number of variables at play, and in watching the county and talking to the county with their program, that was the approach that they took as well.
All right, well, with that in mind then, and to give you some latitude, could we get back to what I suggested originally, 15,000 per residential, resident company, 15,000 for the local nonprofits? And these numbers could be adjusted. They would be base numbers, and then we'd be looking at 10,000 apiece for the social service agencies, presumably, which there would be 10.
And so would we set a ceiling then of 100,000 for social services with the intention of coming back if we feel that the need is there for additional organizations?
Yeah, that sounds reasonable to me, yeah. What do you think about that, fellow council members?
Sounds like a good plan.
And how would that impact also the arts organizations? I didn't, I didn't quite get that.
So the resident organizations, the resident companies would receive 15,000 rent credits for use of the venues, and the nonprofit local performing arts groups would be allocated $15,000 to use towards rent credits, which, based on the estimates and looking at the number of organizations as defined there, we would likely see about 10. So it is very likely that 15,000 would be just fitting for that purpose, if we were to provide $1,500 of rental credits to each.
And social services, presumably 10 organizations at 10,000 apiece, but with some latitude to come back to us if there was greater need.
Right.
Would that be extended to arts organizations as well, that latitude?
The greater need latitude for the arts.
Well, for the arts, only because we have, as I mentioned, the artists in Phase Four, which hasn't even been talked about because we are still in Phase Two.
Right.
So I was just wondering whether then that latitude could be extended to the arts.
So I think what I would say, I'm looking at, I'm looking at our director, Jonathan Sarette, and I think certainly yes, we recognize that there's challenges and that we'll need to contemplate things with the arts groups. I think what I would suggest perhaps to the council tonight to ensure that we understand the landscape as it takes shape next year is that we stick with the recommendation at the 15, and then allow us to, you know, really understand when we're able to get back in business, what that looks like, and what the best way to potentially support those and any others that may come forward.
All right.
And I'll just tell you frankly, because we've had a number of discussions today, the theater enterprise is a, is a real ongoing challenge for us. Having a venue that is an enterprise fund, while the city as a whole is performing very well financially, having a venue that is an enterprise fund dependent on revenues from performances and rentals to be completely vacant is a real challenge, and we have to balance that to ensure that that venue remains available to these resident companies and others in our, in our community. And so just always striking to achieve that balance.
All right. Well, what I, oh, Mayor Protem, did you, do you have something?
No, I was, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, I do, I'm appreciative of that, and that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay. Well, what I'm hearing then is that, well, number one, let's not lose sight of even the bigger program here, which is $1 million in rental assistance to some of our residents. That is, I believe we are the only city in the county that's in the position to do that, and which is, again, cites the great fiscal management we have here in the city. There'll be no reduction of services or anything to do that. We have that money set aside, it's in a community benefit account, and now we're going to use it because there's a need, and this will be a community benefit. This will keep people in their homes, and I can't think of a better way to spend that money. And as far as the other business, it's not what I'm hearing, and maybe we can craft a motion, 15,000 apiece for our resident companies, 15,000 for approximately 10 smaller local nonprofits, and then identifying roughly 10 social service agencies for 10,000 apiece. And Claudia, as we said, you and I both want to see latitude with these numbers to be able to come back to us if there's identified need.
I do believe you have one speaker as well, Mayor Adam.
And we do have a speaker. Great. So let's, yeah, let's go to the speaker, and then we'll go back to...
Looks like they may have dropped off, so...
Oh, the speaker has dropped off. So we're back to the council. So if that makes sense to everybody, perhaps I could get a motion to that effect.
I will move to approve the recommendation then. This is Mayor Protem, Bill Delapena, with all of the discussions included as to the latitude given to other organizations. Especially those organizations in the Phase Four reopening.
All right. Ms. Noonan's going to restate it for the record.
Yeah, I don't think I need to restate it. I think I have it down. I just want to make sure that the motion includes the revisions to recommendation number three that were distributed in the supplemental packet that would increase the expenditure amount for acquisition of the software licensing.
Yeah, I saw that. Well, hopefully, we can work out a good deal on that, right?
Right. Unfortunately, we just got information from the county today, and it surprised us a little bit. So we'll be working with the county. We believe it's just some calculation cost, a number of hours needed, a number of license or users, licensed users needed. So we'll be working with that, and if we cannot negotiate a reasonable price, we will look to our in-house IT staff. We just want to make sure we can get this done quickly, which we think we can do, so with the county.
Good. And we do have a leg up because the software's there, so we don't have to reinvent it, and it'll help us get the money out quickly. All right, so there's a motion on the floor, and just, maybe I should restate it, 15,000 per resident company, 15,000 for approximately 10 smaller nonprofits, and 100,000 for approximately 10 social service agencies with staff latitude to come back to us with extra need, and put that in front of us so we can take another look at it. All right. And that motion was made by Mayor Protem, so if I may have a vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
I would say yes, Mr. Mayor, but I want to make a quick comment. I think we had a presentation earlier tonight about our fine A grade as far as a well-run city. I think having the ability to do this is a nexus right back to that, and I'm happy to vote. I wish there was more money we could devote to these very worthy activities.
Well said. Thank you, Bob. So that's yes from Bob.
Councilmember Jones?
I, and I'd like to say here, here are what Bob just said.
Mayor Protem, Bill Delapena?
My answer will be yes, and I'm very thankful that the city of Thousand Oaks is in a position to help not only those who may need rental assistance, but also nonprofit organizations which help our seniors and others in need, but also those, that industry, the arts and entertainment industry, which has not been able to really open up until Phase Four, and they will, they will be hurting the most, I mean, not the most necessarily, but hurting quite a bit, and needs to be taken into consideration as well. So I appreciate the latitude that will be given to the Phase Four industry. Thank you.
Very good.
Mayor Adam?
And I vote yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
All right. I want to thank Melissa Hurtado. She's been working very hard on this program to make it happen, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. What's next on the agenda? If I turn the page here, uh-huh. Next is a follow-up from our city manager.
Thank you so much, Mayor Adam. Thank you so much, Mayor Adam. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on the 8th of September, Tuesday evening. We'll be providing the requisite COVID update, and for right now, just one staff report, and that's a contract for our brand-new land management software system for community development and public works. That's all.
Thank you. And we have closed session items. Ms. Noonan, if you care to announce those?
Thank you, Mayor. We have several closed session matters. We have two of them for public employee performance evaluations pursuant to government code section 54957B1 for the city attorney and the city manager. We have two conferences with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6 for the city attorney and the city manager. We have one conference with legal counsel for anticipation, anticipated litigation under 59456.94, and we have one conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, Gregory Tajane versus the city council of the city of Thousand Oaks pursuant to government code section 54956.9A.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Noonan. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that's going to do it for this evening. Everybody, please stay safe and practice safe procedures here in the city so we can beat this COVID business, and I have a prediction that 2021 is going to be a great year for the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you and good evening.